It is now seven o'clock. I'm going to call to order the Town of Halifax Planning Board meeting for Thursday, October 2nd. Hard to believe it's already October 2025. We are meeting in the Selectmen's Meeting Room at 499 Plymouth Street here in Halifax, obviously. I need to announce that the Planning Board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be viewed on YouTube and Community Access Television. I think I covered all of that. If I missed anything, somebody tell me.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as written.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to accept the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous.
Who's in attendance?
Oh, I could do that. I could do that.
Sorry.
No, no, I asked if I missed anything to bring it up. Attending tonight's meeting, my extreme left is Amy True. Next to me is Bert Gainer, myself Tom Millius, and to my right, Jamie Walsh. I'm bad with names, if you hadn't noticed. Bruce Sylvester is not attending this evening. He is on vacation, lucky him. Our first appointment is the continuation of PSPR 254, 590 Mont Ponce Street Site Plan Review. Would you like to present? Please announce who you are and then you can go where you want to go.
My name's Matt, representing 590 Mont Ponce Street. We planned originally to go for occupants of 80 to 120, and we have now dropped it to 60. Together to approve so we can get the building permit or start that process, and then we're going to come back once we have the lease with the church. The pastor's away for three weeks, so.
Interestingly, so that you should know, in case you don't know, the building inspector has tendered his resignation. He will be terminating himself next Thursday, so I don't know who's going to be stepping into that role in the interim, just so that you had a heads up, that's all. So where you're reducing it to 60, I'm assuming we're not taking into account the deck, we're not doing anything with that at this point?
So the deck we have on there is being closed, so I don't know how it would go with seating plan wise, because seating plan, like the tables in that event room, those wouldn't be there during coffee hours, you know, essentially. Essentially, the tables would move from the deck outside to inside for a restaurant. So I put red lines on the site plan of what the different departments wanted, like the Highway Department said that he didn't want snow piled on the sidewalk, so we put that in there as a red line, and then we put a red line in for the deck to be enclosed, and then we put a red line in to change it to 60 occupants, which is 55 people with 10 employees.
And you can accommodate that either inside or outside? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, it's mainly inside.
Okay.
Because the existing building inspector doesn't allow for outside sales for the zoning.
Yeah, there's nothing in the zoning bylaws to support it, that's what the problem is.
Yeah, that's the problem. So we plan to just go for 60 occupants and then get a lease and then come back for 80 to 120. The plan is to get this approved, I mean, yeah, it's like a red line, but we'll put it on the plans so that we can at least start building.
So you'll have adequate parking for what you're proposing? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I've had 26 spots.
I think it's 27.
Where am I missing one?
Oh, back should have numbered them.
14 plus 7 is 21 plus, oh, 27, I did that now, 27.
When you say, are you opening up to questions?
You got anything else to bring up? Or we're ready for questions? Okay.
When you say closing the deck, what are you talking, roof, sides?
So a roof and then accordion windows, like an animal, you know what that is?
Like accordion window, accordion walls.
But only the top, not the bottom. Bottom's full glass, and then the top is accordion windows.
And Conservation's okay with that?
We'd have to go back through for that, so we actually don't have any seating out there, but the building inspector wanted the deck to be enclosed for people to sit out there.
So what he was saying was in order to get service out there, you'd have to enclose it, you'd have to enclose structure.
So it's a halfway wall, and then above that, so it's like a half?
Yeah, so like the bottom piece is like a storefront window essentially, and then there's a rail on top of that, and then it would just be accordion windows.
All right, and that's going to go on three sides of the deck?
Three sides, yeah, and then the top would be, because eventually we would like to do a retractable, but those are very expensive.
How many tables are going to fit out there?
So out there, we would probably only do two to four person tables, so about 15 people, 20 people.
All right, and as we discussed in the last meeting before the changes came up in regards to the deck, there's no portable bar or portable anything that goes out there to be, as the building inspector said, there'd be no service out there, it'd be strictly come inside, get your food, drinks and whatever, and go out there to sit down, correct?
Yeah, correct, but I mean, with it being enclosed, it's technically not open air.
Yeah, I think he was directing you towards that, right?
He didn't bring anything up about the bar. The bar was more for like if we guarded all the way outside.
Just only because he looks like he's on, I was going to.
Danielle has her hand up.
Oh, Danielle, yes.
I don't know if it's on purpose, but.
Danielle, are you looking for our attention?
Nope, that was my cat on the keyboard, sorry.
No cats on the keyboard.
You're out of the vote. Tell that cat.
Mr. Bragg, are you there?
I'm here, Jared.
I just wanted to kind of confirm what we were hearing or talking about for 590 Mont Ponce Street. Did you hear the description of the enclosure of that deck?
Somewhat, but I don't believe we ever had any confirmation about a half wall. I believe my suggestion was there needs to be a total enclosure, could be all glass, I gave my suggestions to them. It could be something that could be opened up with screens, but it still needs to be a complete enclosure in order to allow, that was the food service could be allowed out there because it would be part of the original structure. That's how I, that was the meeting I had with them last week.
Were you looking to limit the total occupancy regardless of whether it was inside and outside? When I say outside, I'm talking about an enclosed deck, if we were to enclose it to the appropriate level, or would adding both add seating capacity immediately, or would you restrict it by just a limit of total occupancy? I know I was all over the place with that.
The total occupancy was.
The thing is, I still have not seen what their design is for the outside deck, so I don't know how it's going to be enclosed, how to do the measurements for seating that would be allowed up there, to add the option to go to that addition without having plans.
Right, because everything changes, whether you have concentrated seating, whether you have standing room.
That is correct.
So Joe, I guess the bottom line would call it a half wall with the accordion type rollaway wall going from say, just as we're talking, say waist high up, that is or is not acceptable?
As I said to Matt and then Dan Bolt, I thought maybe I knew what that was, there were three of them, I said it needs to be a complete enclosure, but in order to qualify to be part of the structure and be considered inside seating, so there'd be no problem with service into that area. Again, I did give my suggestions to Matt and them about like something like a solarium or a sunroom, I called it. If someone built like that where, say, the windows could be open, screen or something for air to flow in, then that would be acceptable and that would meet the requirements.
I'm going to ask the applicant, do you have a set of plans for what you're doing out there?
No, it will be finished in two weeks.
So I mean, what I was going with that was that that's probably something you should present to the building inspector and get some feedback on whether that plan is acceptable or not, except he's not going to be here in two weeks, so I don't know who's going to be here, but I think that would be the logical next step unless anybody has a different thought on this.
Well, it probably would be, but.
I have a question.
Is the deck there now?
No.
Is the deck approved by Conservation?
Yeah.
So if the deck's approved, they'll most likely allow him to enclose it, right?
Yeah, I don't think that's an issue with Concom, I think it's just.
I'm just making sure to check that box.
No, 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 I'm a big fan of doing that and covering all the bases.
So I guess the word that boils down to is whether or not it's a permanent enclosure, it's not a temporary one or a half one, he needs it enclosed, that's what I heard. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I would agree.
Yeah, I think that's what I heard as well. That's why I was asking if there was a plan so he could, you know, present it and get some feedback.
What was your question?
My question is, so I understand what he means by the full closure, and we don't have plans, but as far as like the site plan goes, would that like get approved and then the building enclosure could go through the building inspector, or is it all in one? That's my question.
Well, you probably.
That's a valid question.
Let's talk about parking.
Well, to answer your question, I personally would say no, that would be my own personal vote. I would want to see a definitive plan, you know, not, well, we're thinking about doing this down the road and maybe this should happen and, I don't know, that's just my own personal feeling, I don't know.
Yeah, things can always get modified down the road, but at least, but we're starting in on this, I'd prefer to see the whole thing presented as a complete package.
And we've had, what, two or three changes since we've started looking at this anyway, you know, so I would personally like to see a set definitive plan.
John, can I jump in for one second?
Sure.
I just wanted to know if you saw the email from Highway from Steve.
Yeah, I perused it. He was talking about the fact that there wasn't a sidewalk on one side, and so he wasn't in favor of.
A crosswalk.
A crosswalk. I don't think it's a good spot for a crosswalk anyway, but that's irrelevant whether I think it's a good spot or not.
Is there any other?
As Leno said, that he recommended valet.
Yeah, I think it was your father who brought up a valet, oh, it was you, okay, valet service, so that's something we could discuss when we talk about.
Yeah, my plan was to drop the occupancy and go with the existing amount of spots we have.
Yeah.
So we can at least.
Get going.
Yeah, and bring it into the building inspector, and then finalize the lease because we're talking to other people besides the church, and then come back in with the valet proposal.
And then what would you do about the crosswalk situation?
Not do it.
Not do it. No one wants to do the crosswalk. I talked to the head of the traffic safety, he says valet, talked to Steve, which she's the surveyor, and he's on the traffic safety, he said to do valet, they all said to do valet.
I think that can work.
Do we have a right to do valet in this town, like under the?
Never seen it, to be honest.
I don't know that it's legislated.
It isn't, it's not on the.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we specifically address it, but I don't know that it would, how would you?
Well, I was just asking because I've never heard of it either, so, I mean, like I've heard of it, obviously, but.
I'm with you, I get it.
So how many seats do you have? Because that would mean that you would only be able to have 25, you'd only be able to have 50 seats in the place.
Yes, we have it 60.
But you're, but so like with the amount of spots, 27, if you take five.
I'll drop it to 50 then, that's fine.
So five, and then you'd have 22 times two is 44, so you'd only be able to have 44 seats.
And then.
Because our bylaw reads to do.
It's two seats per spot.
Yeah, but then employees take up some of those spots.
Two employees per spot.
So it's five for that, and then you only have 22 seats left, I mean, 22 parking spots left, which then would mean that you only could have 44 seats inside.
Does that sound right to you, Joe?
What was that?
We were doing parking calculations. Amy was mentioning that with 27 spots, five spots were dedicated to employees, which left 22 times two would be 44 maximum occupancy of patrons. Does that sound right without you having to dive into the chart?
Well, it's G, one space for each two employees and one space for each two seats permanent or otherwise for patron use for restaurants and other places serving food or beverage, and for theaters, auditoriums, and other places of amusement or assembly.
And you figured 10 employees, is that what you're figuring?
That was for 60 occupants or 50.
The plan says 10 employees, yeah, for 60, but I don't think you can squeeze 60 in there.
No, you would only be able to buy the parking, have 20, I'm sorry, what did I say, 40?
Forty-four.
What are you supposed to meet with Conservation?
They're past.
To enclose it, though.
Yeah, I'll have to go back through.
Probably that would be the best thing to do, is to go make sure they just check that box, and then do the plans for the building inspector to look at for the deck, and then show that there's only 44 spots and, you know, at tables. Anything else?
I mean, if you're down to eight employees, you can make it 46, but.
Coming back for this, the occupancy, I'm just, I don't really care what it is right now.
Yeah, like, when he's going to do this and then update it.
Yeah.
I just want to get this approved so we can actually start the building.
I got a question. So he has to go back to Conservation just because he's enclosed in the deck, even though he's already been through it for an outside deck? The footings aren't changing, right?
Well, the process in any event, even if we were to approve this tonight, when he applied for a building permit, it gets routed past Concom again and/or Board of Health again. I'm not suggesting we approve it, I'm just saying that there is another process on top of this.
Do we have a letter from the Board of Health in there?
No, I did not see.
Board of Health emailed me back today with the existing subject, find the 60 occupants.
Okay, so that would be fine for anything.
It's in the portal.
Wouldn't need that.
Can you email us?
Yeah, I was going to say, we need to copy that.
If it's in the portal, you said, so Danielle can access it for us?
Great, thank you. I would think that if he did these things and make an appointment with Conservation and come back in, I would be okay as long as it was within the parking.
Get something from Conservation, which.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Since we showed no seating outside on the seating plan, would that mean anything?
Well, I don't know, I'd have to calculate your floor space in there to figure out what you could have for maximum seating, but it's still predicated on the parking, yeah.
No, I know it's predicated on the parking, but I'm saying, to get at least something to move forward, there's no seating on the deck outside in the seating plan.
Well, we need the plans in Concom, I think, especially since last meeting we sent somebody to Concom to get approved before we approved them, we have to follow that same suit.
Do we have anything from Concom? I don't believe so. Did you have anything from there?
They had.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, it says here March, okay, 314 per Concom comments, so I'm assuming at some point they went through Concom and made some changes to the plan.
The only thing they're going to be concerned with if we enclose the deck is the runoff from the roof.
That would change everything.
Yeah, never thought of that.
Yeah, I would.
I shouldn't have brought that up.
No, no, I mean, it'll come up because.
But I brought the seating thing because I could just say that we're not going to enclose the deck, just so we can at least start building.
I know where you're trying to go with this, and it makes sense, I'd probably be trying to do the same thing.
I mean, we don't plan to open until the spring, but it's starting to get to the winter, where like the outside needs to be done.
Did, when you went to Concom, did they at least see the deck plan? They knew the deck was on there, okay.
The only thing changes with Concom is that if we do an enclosure, but if we don't do seating outside at this time, then nothing would change and drop the occupancy.
Yeah, I mean, the building inspector would still have to calculate to make sure that the size of the building's okay for 44, but, you know, as far as the parking spots go, you're good for 44, the building has to accommodate it, so there's still another little layer of supervision in there.
I mean, if you really want to do it that way, then another week or two to make sure that you're not doing stuff and then backstepping would probably be a good idea as much as you want to get started, but I don't like to push it down, but you might as well get it all packaged up.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? That's my opinion, but.
I don't disagree, I hate to delay people, but I think if you're getting close to getting the plans for the room and you can get that whole thing done, I mean, it's still going to be limited to 44 people until you get some parking squared away.
Yeah.
Regardless of, yeah, regardless of how much space you have.
We should ask Joe. Joe?
Yes, Amy.
Thank you. With the current interior space, let's say he's not using the deck for any tables or anything, would he have enough space inside per yaw codes for 44 people and 10 employees?
Good question.
Yeah, he'd have to research that.
Yeah, we've accomplished that, and everything keeps shifting.
Yep.
So, again, I have to go back to the fact that I've seen different things along the way, and it'd be better, but it was not me, it was better if a definitive plan was put together for this project, so even whoever replaces me can look at it and do proper calculations for square footers, the deck covered, not covered, there's just too many variables that aren't definitive for this project. That's how I, that's my honest answer at this point.
Thank you, that's what I wanted, is an honest answer.
Because, you know, it also brings up another question in terms of the runoff, how it's calculated and where it's going, you know, from the additional roof.
I know closing the deck sounds nice, but it throws that whole thing into.
Into someplace else, yeah.
It's not like it's a small enclosure, the roof, the runoff.
No, it's big, yeah, at 50 feet, so, you know, maybe the, just the deck open at this point, I don't know if that, or you just don't want to do the deck at all at this point.
No, we'll still leave the deck.
Without the enclosure, and then add your enclosure later. Just going to have to structurally design it so it'll accommodate it, that's all. I think that's not a bad way to go.
I'm going to have to come back in here, so.
Yeah.
What do we have for dates on the site plan here?
We did extend it last time, I can't remember.
I know, I just wanted to make sure what the date size.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly, it's in the minutes, I think, if you haven't got any more.
I'll look.
I think I remember seeing it in the minutes.
Oh, I have it right here. Extend six days from 9/11, so it would be 1931 is 50, so I think it's November 10th.
So we're.
We're good.
We're good, yeah.
November 10th, though, we'll have to, so our meetings in November are 6th, so let us know on the 6th if you're going to need more time, which I don't want you to need more time, so probably get in with Conservation and see what you're going to do, and sorry.
So just for my own benefit, they let the deck as just a deck, and then got the permits, built it and whatnot, then came back and said, okay, we're going to enclose it and put a roof on, it would be in my consideration personally, that that would be a substantial change, which would require.
A modification.
A whole, well, a substantial modification.
Yeah.
So basically, you're throwing the old stuff out and starting all over again, which I would imagine would get a little expensive, as opposed to doing it in one shot and take it from there. I don't know how, you know, the rest of you guys feel, but I would think you enclose and put a roof on and put three sides on it, and that's a substantial change.
I would absolutely agree with you.
Well, I think it's the use that we're looking at. I mean, if the deck's already there, what changes, in my immediate opinion, is any flow from the roof, and that'll have to be addressed. You know, I mean, it's going to be the same amount of water, it's just a matter of how it goes and where it's going, yeah. It's not going to change the volume per se, so as far as modification goes, yeah, I mean, there's a modification involved.
Matt, just for, yeah, just.
But he can't occupy, I'm sorry, he can't occupy anymore unless he resolves the.
Well, do, yeah, that's a, let me view.
Yeah, essentially, we would build the deck, overbuild it, like structural wise, and have those calculations already put in place.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
For the load capacity.
That's how.
And then you just do it in the future.
What specifically did Mr. Bragg, he said there were like three different recommendations he made, what were they?
One was just like a full glass enclosure.
Oh, that's the sunroof.
Yeah, it's like a sunroom. The problem with doing a retractable roof is that it's very expensive, so we never planned to do that in the beginning anyways, because that would be about 100 for just the roof.
Oh, yeah.
So we planned to do a hard ceiling and then just do a full glass enclosure.
I think your idea is great, I would get everything crossed and then do it over the winter, and open in the spring, and it'll just be done. But what I would do if I were.
There's a lot of work to do there.
I know, but it's a great idea.
It's a good spot, but parking's still going to be the bugaboo there.
Most people will come off that kayaks and paddle boards.
All right, so what do we do? What would you like, a motion to continue this?
Yeah, I would look for a motion to continue this, I think you've got a handle on what you need to bring in so we can get this thing done for you.
Do you want us to put it on the next meeting, just in case?
Yeah, so basically, you want me to go talk to Conservation, if there is a big problem with full deck enclosure, and maybe decide on it, or if we made the decision if we move forward with it, to make us go to another meeting.
Yeah.
And then you swap the occupancy change, and maybe some plans to Joe or the.
No, not maybe.
Yeah, some plans to.
Some plans.
I said maybe Joe, because he, you know.
Oh, okay.
So we have a definite plan of what's in front of us, what we're going.
Drawing of the deck and what are you going to do with it.
One of the, if you can get the plan sooner rather than later, before Mr. Bragg leaves, that would, you know, if you could possibly do that.
Push things along for you.
Because I don't know what the plan is to fill a position, even in an interim way.
Who's going to inspect up the street, what's that?
I'm sorry?
Who's going to do the inspection?
That's what I'm getting at, I don't know. I don't know that the decision's been made, or if they've tried to find somebody or not tried to find somebody, I don't know. All right, thank you. We're going to try to get this done for you next time, get it over with. Do I have a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue to the October.
Oh, sorry, what did I say?
16?
Is that next?
Yep.
Yeah, 14 days from today.
To the October 16th, we.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Oh, thanks.
I have a motion and a second to continue this hearing to the 16th of October. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hear. Hearing no opposed?
I didn't say aye.
Aye, me too, aye.
Well, I didn't hear any opposed, so.
Okay.
Unanimous, thank you. We'll try to get this done for us.
See, we should get them off.
Yeah.
Can we add some plans to them?
Do you have the elastic? Oh, no, I don't have it. Burke's home. Thank you.
There's a lot of people who'd like to do this.
Tom, finish sitting right there.
All right, next up, continuation of PSPR twenty-five dash three, five thirty-nine Plymouth Street. And I think this was kind of an if one, and I don't see anybody here for that, so I think we can move on from that.
Yeah, and the site plan is for, um, it expires on eleven fifteen twenty twenty-five, so we're good.
So we're still good. Next up, we have a discussion from three forty Plymouth Street, complaint concerning three eighteen Plymouth Street. Mr. Alger.
I'm Tom Alger, three forty Plymouth Street. Um, I just want to thank Mr. Gainer and Mr. Millius, Chairman Millius, uh, for coming out today uh, to attend a meeting that I had with Mr. White that's constructing a storage facility at three fourteen. Um, and Mr. Peck, Joe Peck, was there as well. I think he's the owner of the property. Um, so the initial concern was encroachment on that construction project onto three forty, three forty and three forty-six Plymouth Street. And we determined that there was encroachment. So they have, uh, they agreed to solve that encroachment within two weeks. So that was the agreement. So I just wanted to memorialize that.
Yeah.
In the meantime, uh, we're going to hire a surveyor to come out and do that. Um, even though the, they removed our stakes that we had out there.
It's always smart to confirm.
So, but we'd already had stakes there, uh, that we'll, we'll have to pay again to have resurveyed. Um, also, I, I was a bit concerned, uh, with Mr. White, uh, cause he was unaware of this decision letter that, um, was presented to Mr. Peck, um, by the planning board. So there are some requirements on here that, um, we want to make sure that, that they're adhering to once this, this facility is built. Uh, one being, um, that the hours of operations will be, will be six AM to ten PM at the latest. Um, and the dimensions of the signage, and also that there'll be no outside storage of any kind ever. So, um, that there, and also, um, that they're utilizing to construct this facility, they're utilizing, utilizing a plan that was uh, put together by a previous engineer, Sylvia, and, uh, yeah, Sylvia, Larry. And, uh, so on that, it has some easements that's recorded that they don't have, uh, approval for from us to use our land. So, um, and they felt strongly that they did have the authority to use our land, but there was no easement provided to them. So I just wanted to make that clear and, and have a record of this.
Okay, um, so the last part of the decision letter you're okay with, cause it says on here that it.
There will be no apparatus, no shrubage on three forty or three forty-six property.
Okay, cause that would be opposite of what this decision letter does state.
Right, but.
You're okay with that?
Yes, I do not want, I do not want that on there. The town doesn't have the authority to, um, to, to force.
To, to put it on your.
To put it on my property.
Right, but it says that it'll be placed at the facility, which is of their, um, storage facility.
Then that's your, that's your fight with them.
Yeah.
So it states as on this decision letter that there should be twelve-foot abobites and block wall with Alger picked stones and blocks. And it will be placed at the facility.
Yeah, I think they, they presented a, a view of the, the wall. Was that something that was agreed upon? I, I can't remember.
So it says that the Alger would pick the stones and blocks.
No, I, I understand, but they, they did look at a picture of, or.
Oh, today.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. A rendition, if you will, not exactly a picture.
And then, then the blocks looked fine.
Yeah, I, I thought so too, but that was.
Acceptable.
So you're okay with the blocks?
Okay with the blocks.
And you, and even though it does state that there should be twelve-foot abobites on the facility property, you're okay with them not doing that?
Oh, no, they, they can do that if they want. I mean, that's, that's the town, that's the planning for its decision.
Oh, sorry, right, because it's not on your.
It's not on my property, and I can't dictate that.
But it's on the easement.
So what's this easement? This is just for drainage?
I have them placed in the facility.
It's not the one for the drainage?
Twelve-foot block wall with blocks placed at the facility.
At the facility.
So it's at the facility. So I think that they should be putting, I mean, I think they should be putting them up per the decision letter.
Yeah, I don't think they had a problem with that.
Well, I don't think they have the land or the space to put the apparatus.
I don't know that.
But that's, that's your.
They may not be able to.
To make sure that they comply with this.
They may not be able to fit them on there. That's, that, that was the issue.
But it is part of the decision letter.
Oh, I, I'm not, I'm not disputing that.
I think that they should find the room for it where it is part of the decision letter, or they should ask for it to be removed. Cause that was part of the, that was the whole part of the decision that we were making to buffer you guys.
Right, right.
So.
I think, I think what happened was it, whatever plan they were looking at, and I, and I wasn't involved in any of that, cause that was prior to me, but I don't know if there's another plan that actually got approved, cause that didn't look like a signed plan. So somewhere along the line, this plan materialized with this easement on there, and as I explained to them, unless they have a recorded document, they don't have an easement.
Right.
It can be on the plan, it doesn't matter.
But it.
So they were operating thinking that they had this easement that was on the plan, and I don't believe they did.
Did they have a copy of the decision letter?
No, they didn't. I provided that.
I was gonna say you provided.
So that's why I'm so adamant about making sure that we have our signed copy of a site plan or anything like that on hand, so that we have it not just in the computer system, but when we sign a site plan, there should be a record document copy in the town hall, so that we have no problems.
I believe there is.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, it's hard, cause we don't have them here, you know?
Yeah, no, I understand. Plus, honestly, during the move, everything got misplaced all over the place.
Right.
So, uh, the, we can always order a copy of the plan, the recorded plan. That's, that's where it gets difficult.
That's where it got difficult today was.
Over the course of time.
What isn't recorded, what's on the deed, what's not.
I'm sure you've dealt with it too.
There is a recorded site plan, and that's what they were going by. And, and when they were looking at, uh.
That might not have been the recorded plan, that's what I was getting at. That might have just been a rendition of the plan.
Oh, you mean the one they had?
The one they had. So, so we need to see a copy of the recorded plan, and that's what happens all the time. I, and I, it's happened to me a million times. You get revisions upon revisions upon revisions, and then when you go to pull a plan, you pull the wrong one, and, and everybody's off to the races.
But ultimately, it's what's being reported at the registry deeds.
Absolutely, absolutely correct. The one that was recorded is the one that operates. But that doesn't necessarily mean they're right either. You know, like if that easement happened to be on the plan that got recorded, that's unfortunate, because if there wasn't a recorded document, you know, a deed to easement, then it doesn't exist.
But today, as in this afternoon, there were, uh, stakes that were marked the property lines.
Yeah, so.
And there was the GPS put on, which brought the accuracy into, was it an eighth of an inch or a quarter of an inch? And it wasn't the big pipes or the yellow pipes, it was what, uh, the applicant had put down, and it couldn't have been any more on the money. You know, looking at the GPS, it's, like I said, I think it was within a quarter of an inch.
And that's absolutely true. Um.
Cause it was so much different from the yellow pipe that you really thought, well, your experience.
But they had, they had removed them and you, you estimated where you were putting them back.
Exactly, exactly. And one of the, one of the, the, the ways that you can tell where those pipes were in estimation is that we had been mowing, uh, that, that lawn area for the last thirty years. So it's been maintained for the last thirty years, and that was the point that I was trying to stress that, um, you know, I, I roughly put back those pipes that they removed, and they were asked not to remove those pipes. Uh, and they disregarded our request and they just removed our pipes.
And unfortunately.
Coming to us and saying, hey, we have a disagreement.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, they were, they encroached with the digging, so it isn't like you could even say, this is where it was.
Right.
How much did they overdig by?
Well, the one pipe, the yellow pipe, pipes that were there were a good two feet off, maybe even three. When, when you actually, when they scraped it, like I said, it was in a, within an eighth of an inch of, of the actual property line.
If you were using the developer's stakes, probably about a foot, foot and a half, maybe. But if you were using the stakes that Mr. Alger put back where he believed they belonged, it's a couple more feet. So it's really hard to tell, uh, and unfortunately, you're in a terrible position of having to survey it.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and then if, if they have a dispute, they've got to get a registered surveyor, and then that it gets hashed out between the surveyors, but.
And there's no money left in peer engineering to make sure that it's okay and it's not, cause it. This isn't the project. This was the three eighteen, but this isn't you, this, the three eighteen folder, but this is the three fourteen.
Well, the, the numbers.
Even though it says true storage site plan, it doesn't state. I mean, this isn't true storage, right? Am I wrong?
How would the drainage report?
Uh, yeah, I'll open that up. This is just the first one that I did, but this is, right? I mean, that's Starbucks. This one you mean?
Yeah.
So to his point, the questions that he still has outstanding is the sign and the operations, right? So we're assuming there's a sign drawn somewhere that they.
I don't know that they've applied for a sign permit yet.
And also that there'll be no outside storage.
Yeah, yeah, that was pretty clear and we watched some of the meetings. But so you do have an easement for the drainage, that's all set, no problems there.
Uh, as far as it goes with the storage facility, all that drainage goes directly back to.
Right, it doesn't cross your property. It's, it's the Starbucks slash Autozone, whatever it is.
So that's what this easement is for Starbucks?
Yeah.
Not the storage?
Right.
Okay.
That's the whole thing, um, so situation, brain. Where's the plus?
Yeah, the storage facility butts the country club.
Yeah, yeah. But it's weird, cause this drainage talks about stone walls.
Yeah, well, that was included in part of that too.
Is that all we can do?
Signage, as far as signage goes, I think unless it's changed over the years, I think the maximum signage is thirty square feet. Is that, did that number ever come up?
We just be in the north.
For a single business, thirty square feet is the maximum. Or at least it was, I don't know, it might have changed.
But it's just the water shed then.
Yeah.
It doesn't really show us what we need to. So we don't have the three eighteen site plan?
Were there multiple plans? Didn't they come in with a problem?
Guys, those files might be a little bit wonky, because that was zero and three fourteen at one point before they gave it the number three eighteen.
Yep.
Uh, so it might be a little bit all over the place, um, for what you're looking for, but I can try and look, um, on Monday when I get.
Thank you, yeah, we figured that, cause it, yeah, we remember that part. Thank you so much, Daniel. That's the end.
But you'd think that, that, that second bullet would have, would have resolved a lot of, uh, a lot of the issues. Uh, where the easement would be recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds before any permits or work can start. So you would think that that would have been the.
That's what we were talking about this afternoon. I, Tom said maybe I had it confused because the, I thought it was recorded, that we did have an actual letter with, with the signature zone, but Tom said it could very well have been the easement closest to the house as opposed to this one. I, we couldn't verify if it, cause it would seem to me that we wouldn't sign off on a site plan until we had that definitive, uh, recording. But that's what Tom said, that's what we have to figure out.
Part of this had to do with, um, the storage facility was going to come first, and then Starbucks was going to come second.
Correct, yeah.
So I think that's where the confusion happened, and that's why I think that first bullet around the drainage, um, is on there. Is because the drainage was going to happen with the.
So make sure the provision was there for the other people, yeah. Yeah, that makes sense. That's what we were kind of wrestling with this afternoon.
They're saying it could very well not been the same easement that we're talking about now, the one that was closest to.
But that was the one that was.
But then there was, so that was the requirement to, to fix that drainage with the, with the pipes on, on three forty Plymouth Street. Um, and.
That's what we dealt with in the.
And that's what we dealt with, I forget what I was gonna say. Um, but they never got the easement to put those trees in on our property.
Right, right, that's the easement. This isn't referring to that.
Yeah, no, this is referring to.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, and like I said this afternoon, unfortunately, they showed an easement on the plan they had, but I don't believe it was ever executed. They never actually got an easement.
I, I think it was.
We never talked about them having an easement for it, because on the decision letter, it states that they'll be placed at the facility.
And they may have been thinking about doing that, and it never got removed from the plan, it just could have escaped the board at the time.
The abovities were on his plan. They were definitely on.
Yeah, they were on his plan, as was.
But they were on the facility side?
No.
The recorded one?
On the record, on the plan that he had.
Oh, you mean it, it was one that he had that he used and it wasn't the correct one?
Well, we don't think it was the correct one. I mean, cause we didn't have a copy of anything that we could verify was the recorded plan, so we're gonna have to look for a recorded plan.
Yeah, there were two sets of plans. One were from Silver in two thousand twenty-two, and then this was as of March or April.
Twenty-three. It was pretty close to, it was pretty close to the date of this.
Yeah, March twenty-third, twenty-three, was it?
Maybe it was, um, May eighteen twenty twenty. You mean the decision letter?
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm getting it confused with next door, never mind. Scratch.
I guess that's where I'm confused, cause this, this easement talks about the storage facility. With the retaining wall.
Did we get a copy of those plans when you do find them?
Yes.
And his address.
I'm sure you heard that right, Daniel?
The retaining wall is just shown on a plan entitled Site Wall Halifax Site Self Storage.
Recorded site plan, we can get a copy through the address.
It's really confusing, you're gonna go there. Cause there's, there's a wall that's already up.
It was nice between, we could meet this afternoon.
So I go down that new road. Yeah, yeah.
Open on the right hand side.
No. Off, always is a wall, um, that, that's built, a stone wall.
Oh, it turns up.
Yeah, and then there's a wall that's supposed to go across easement, uh, on that side to help block their view.
Yes.
So block their view to stop up?
Yeah, to, um, the storage facility. But they have one of, they've got, you gotta go there and see it.
And they would go last year, twenty twenty-five.
Anytime you remember. Yeah.
Right, it was a big hobo.
Looks like they have an easement.
But we all met.
But not for the right thing.
Nothing was gonna happen until everything was in writing and I thought everything was in writing, cause I, I know there was a letter signed by.
And I tried to watch the meeting and try to catch up, but.
With Alger's signature on it, whether.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm confused, but you know, with, with, there was two different easements, but, uh, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, well, come.
That's the important thing. We'll figure it out.
We can go to the registry and get the book and plan.
Exactly. In fact, I think the attorney said at the actual book and plan this afternoon.
Yeah, there's, there's just one easement, and that's, that's what we have in place right now.
Yeah, five nine seven five six, page one five three.
Good.
Okay, duly noted.
What was that?
Thank you.
Page, Amy?
Excuse me. Excuse me.
And I was, I was commenting this afternoon.
Amy, what, you said the easement is on what book?
It's on book Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, book 59756, page 151.
So that's this.
That's it.
Yeah.
If, if by two weeks it doesn't look like they're going to do what they said they were going to do, then, you know, by all means, let us know.
Sure.
Then we can intervene with whatever we can do.
Plus they did agree, just to the rest of the board, that, yes, that the, to backfill with loom and then plant the seed up, up to the wall.
Right.
But again, the wall had to be put up first because it's, because if you put loom down, it's just going to go fly across. So the, the wall's going in, the loom's going in, the seed's going in right up.
And he said he was going to compact it too, so.
And he has two weeks to do it.
Yeah. And.
No, no, no. He, he wasn't going to get the, he wasn't going to get the block for two weeks. And then he needed a week. So, right? He said, he's not going to be able to get the block for two weeks and then it's going to take him time to put the wall in, then put the loom in, then put the seed in.
My understanding is two weeks. He has two weeks to do, to accomplish this.
Yeah, that got a little muddled. I, I-
Well, first it was one week.
Yeah, right.
And then they said, we don't even get the block.
I said I wanted that tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Yes, you did. That resonated by a little.
And then I was flexible and I said I give him a week because he offered a week. He said, let me do, is, is a week okay? And I said, fine, a week. And then after that, it stretched out to two weeks. So he has up to two weeks.
Yeah, when he was first talking about that week, I think he was talking about the side that, the original side we were looking at because the wall wasn't going to be as close there. But on the other side, I think he wanted to get the wall in, but.
But he has two weeks.
But he said two weeks.
He said two weeks.
Does that mean we put it on the next planning board meeting?
Yeah, yeah, we can put it on the agenda and see how we're doing.
Can we put it on as 318 and 340?
Sure, for an update and then we can take, and, and take any action there. All right, unless you've got anything else, I think we can. Thank you. Thank you. All right, correspondence. We do have a letter from Midland Contractors, also known as Starbucks.
Want me to read it into record?
Sure, I was just looking for it, but as long as you have it.
Midland General Contracts Incorporated, 716 Windsor Road, Loves Park, Illinois. It was sent to us on September 30th, 2025, and it was addressed to the building commissioner of the town of Halifax. It was, the reason for the letter was to request for a temporary certificate of occupancy for 314 Plymouth Street, permit number NC dash 24 dash 2. DIP Building Commissioner and Planning Department. This letter serves as a formal request for an approval to obtaining a temporary certificate of occupancy for the property located at 314A Starbucks Plymouth Street, associated with building permit number NC 24 dash 2. The project at this location is for new construction. The following minor items are still outstanding and are the reason a final certificate of occupancy cannot be issued at the time of completion. Upon completion of the shell scope of work for 314A Plymouth Street, that a temporary traffic signal system will be installed on the access drive from Plymouth Street next to Starbucks. We are requesting the approval to obtain the temporary occupancy with temporary traffic signal system in place. The permanent traffic signal system is delayed due to an extended lead time for the mast arm. We will be requesting the TCO for a period of 180 days. We understand that obtaining a TCO is at the discretion of the building department and that additional conditions may be imposed to ensure occupant safety. Please let us know what additional information or inspections are needed to obtain the temporary certificate of occupancy. Thank you for your time and consideration. Best regards, Cindy Mathias, Controller, Midland General Contractors.
I, I would like to jump in first if I may.
Sure.
I, I think it's a little premature to be asking for a TCO. And what exactly, and they're talking about the mast arm, but they're also talking about an occup, temporary distributive occupancy for the whole site. And they need to come in. I think we need to invite them in and get some discussion. They're going to have to tell us how exactly they plan on leaving this whole thing. And whether in fact the ancillary store, also known as maybe Autozone, is, if they're coming, if they're not coming, if they're not on board, how are you leaving this thing? I have some questions about the island that is in that other entrance, the easternmost in and out with the left turn only.
And the handicap ramp.
And the handicap ramp on front, that isn't, I was going to that, but, but, yeah, that's okay. That isn't on the plan anywhere. And I'm assuming it's a handicap ramp, but we don't know. They need to come in here and start giving us some information. I, I, I wouldn't even entertain personally the discussion about a TCO until we have them here and have an opportunity to discuss this with them.
Evidently, also just to add to that, I understand there was a discussion with, with Steve Haywood in regards to, you know, a temporary signal being put up there. In, in the meantime, because of the mast and Mr. Haywood said, bottom line, you know, it's, it's a matter of conditions that you, that are on the site plan, which have to be adhered to, and he certainly doesn't have the authority to waive or, or put off or give an extension to. You know, he said you'd have to go back to the, to the planning board to, to review that.
And even if we were to give a TCO, and Joe Bragger brought this up and it was a really good point and I'm sure we would have come up with it eventually. We might probably require a surety bond for the completion. We don't want to run into this thing where we're getting three quarters of the way done and then the fight is on. And, and put a time limit on that surety bond. If it isn't executed or performed in X amount of days, the bond gets surrendered.
So the surety bond would be for the completion of the traffic light or the completion of the other building?
Exactly to, to the point I was trying to make earlier. We need from them to tell us what they think they're going to end up with, what they're going to be looking for.
Because when you come out, they're supposed to only be able to go right towards Cumberland Thumbs, right, that way?
Correct.
And Clark, we were wrong, but aren't there two masts there already? This one on one side and one coming up? So what do they need another mast for? I, I, I would like to get clarification. Maybe just-
Can they, yeah, exactly. I mean, there's just too many open questions to be talking about a TCO at this point, in my opinion.
Right, and to, now that you're saying this, wasn't it supposed to be that they were going to center with the stop and shop? Which could, could be done, just saying like the checklist.
Right.
And I feel it, they were going to correct the whole traffic light thing?
Yes, they moved them and they have poured, they have poured the cement and the base, but again, where the mast is, where the mast problem comes down, I'm, I'm missing something.
Okay, so they're on the same page.
Way too many questions to be even talking about a TCO at this point, I think.
So on that, we would probably need to have a PR engineer on how much work would need to be done and then figure out how much that bond would have to be for.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And, and like I said, right now, they're asking if we would, I don't know if they're asking if we would entertain the idea. That isn't how it sounds. It sounds like we'd, we give them one and then they specifically talked about the traffic signals, but if you give somebody a TCO, a temporary certificate of occupancy, you're giving them a certificate of occupancy. They can operate.
Yeah.
And I don't want to get into that mess where we've got people operating and then we're trying to tell them, well, we got to shut this down. And I don't, I don't want to go there.
Especially with a multimillion dollar corporation.
And I'm not sure that that's how it would go, but if it can go that way, it could.
Right.
So if, I would entertain from, from the board to communicate with them and ask them to present their plan.
I, I would make, I would move that motion, please.
Could I be, uh?
Sure.
Tom Alger, 340 Plymouth Street. So when we were talking about the construction of Starbucks and the easement that's through 340 Plymouth Street into the golf course with those two pipes.
Yep.
You know, it's, they've done about, I would say, a good ninety percent of the work, eighty percent of the work on that. However, there is some sinkholes developing with those pipes and there's also some drainage issues still on the property. So once that's completed, I wish that would be taken into consideration for occupants.
Sure, sure. We can bring that up at the same time. I mean, there's just so many open questions. I, I, I think it's just premature to be talking about certificate, temporary certificates of occupancy.
Yeah.
So I, I had a motion, do I have a second, to invite them to a meeting to discuss what their plan is here?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Excellent. We will draft the letter and send it out to Midland.
My daughters will be upset.
Now wait a minute.
She's waiting for Starbucks.
Two of them. I'm going to tell them it's Tom's fault.
I mean, is Midland the new company still, or is this, Midland's the original one?
I think Midland's the original one. They hired contractors to do various things, I believe.
They fired them.
Yeah, it wasn't, it was Kavsky, wasn't it?
No, that would be engineers, that would be engineers, I think.
Oh, contractor, sorry.
Yeah.
I was thinking of the other.
I just got a point of clarification. So 314 is Starbucks?
Yes.
And?
318 is storage.
Because this talks about 314.
Well, what happened was-
318 is-
The storage. Behind Starbucks.
All right.
There was some, where Starbucks is and where the purported second occupancy, whatever it ends up being, because they're on the same parcel of property, they couldn't give them two separate street addresses and shouldn't. So they gave them the A and the B.
Gotcha, okay.
That's how that evolved.
Right, and at the time when we were going over all of these things, we didn't have a number.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that.
So it was really fun.
Yeah, everybody who's a zero, and I hate that.
Yeah, it was really fun.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
WB Mason.
So we have some bills, or a bill, from WB Mason. I think I've got it here, maybe.
Yeah, your folder.
Soon as I get my hands to work. There we go. We have a bill from, you want to read it?
Sure. Thanks.
I don't have my glasses, so I'm going to-
I'll make a motion to pay WB Mason invoice number 256951492 for office supplies in the amount of $148.19.
It's been moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous. We'll sign that. Next up is the meeting minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes?
No. Can I have a copy so I can have them at home? I have, I have to come in and talk to Caesar about my email stuff.
Go sit.
No, I haven't been able to come in. I've been crammed.
Well, we can, we can put the minutes off until the next meeting.
Thank you.
And take care of that. I have a copy in here if you want to make a-
Yeah, might as well just take them, right? Or I can make a copy. And last but not least.
Well, actually, I think I got them in an email. Did you get an email late in the day?
I would, I did.
Yeah.
Do you want a motion for the next meeting or you want to just say we'll do it at the next meeting?
Um, yeah, sure, let's have a motion.
Motion to do the minutes of September 4th, 2025 at the meeting on October 16th, 2025.
Moved and seconded. Oh, no, just moved.
Second.
I jumped ahead. Moved and seconded to put the meeting minutes on the agenda for the next meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Unanimous. Uh, other business.
Decision letter.
Yes, we have a decision letter. There's a, do you have a copy?
I do.
Yeah.
Do you want me to read it into record?
Yes.
Do we have a plan to sign?
There's some confusion as to whether the authority was given to the chair and/or vice chair to sign decision letters. So I had signed it, but what I would be looking for is a confirmation or a ratification of the, just in case. I also reached out or had reached out to counsel for some guidelines on signatures and whatnot. I think they're in your packets. You might want to take a look at those and we can-
I don't have those.
I haven't seen them either.
No?
Yeah, they're on, they're-
Or I don't think so. Hold on. Oh, yes, I do. It's right behind the meeting minutes.
Yeah, they're from Rich Huxham. So, you know, you, you may want to just mention it. You may want to take a look at those. So I would be looking for a, after everyone takes a look at that letter and confirms that that's what we put in there, a ratification of my signature on that decision letter. And we need to sign the plan. Do we have the plans? Yes, we do.
So I guess this says that we, if, if one person was supposed to sign, then?
Typically, the, the chair-
It would have, have to be voted.
Yeah, and I think, I remembered we did that at one point, but then I couldn't remember if it was for one specific plan or for generally speaking.
Okay.
But I believe the law allows for the chair or the vice chair. But just to keep it up and above board.
Well, it's, it says that we would have had to have voted to authorize it.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I, I think that's how we should proceed in the future, just to acknowledge either the chair or the vice chair can sign for the board. Unless there's some reason everybody wants to sign, but it's not necessary.
I like, I like the fact that the decision letter at least comes to, to the meeting before it's signed so that we can make sure that-
Yes, yeah.
You know, people are protected.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
And then if it's at the meeting, then we can vote to have it signed.
Yep. I was actually quite proud of this one because I can actually sign my name again. It took, it took me almost a year to be able to write my signature again.
That's good.
Kind of interesting.
It's, it's, you know, the human body is pretty amazing. Do you have the list of things? Oh, the plan's right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want me to read this into record?
Uh, sure.
August 27th, 2025 to Paul Newcomb.
There's only one, one copy. I'll pass it down to you, Julie.
At a meeting held on Thursday, October 20, I'm sorry, August 21st, excuse me, 2025, the Halifax Planning Board voted five to zero to grant the site plan review application with revised plans dated 8/20/25 for number PS, PR 25 dash 2. Site plan application was submitted on March 12th, 2025 by Webby Engineering on behalf of the property owner, Paul Newcomb of Newcomb's Tree Service for construction of the two additional buildings. But it's only one.
Oh, yeah, now it's only one.
Yep. So one.
Yeah, because he changed it.
125 by, so this is not right. Said to be located at 358 Industrial Drive Halifax. As shown on the SS's map, 47 Lot 5A with the following conditions as listed. New plant submitted to show grass on the north side being changed to recycled gravel. New plant submitted to show one building sprinkled, sprinklered. It's funny to see it that way. New plant submitted to show all underground structures be road rated. Fire hydrant installed as shown on revised plans 8/20/2025. Dumpster pad to be moved to the southeast corner as shown on the revised plans 8/20/25. Twenty-foot fire lane maintained around the perimeter of the buildings per the fire chief, Mike Wytham. In making its decision, the planning board reviewed the criteria listed in Chapter 16728H of the Code of the Town of Halifax as part of site plan reviewed and was assured that the use of the property was reasonable based on the criteria listed in the bylaw. Any change in the use, the scope of use or the location of the business will require a new or modified site plan review and approval. Any relief requested by the applicant which is not expressly granted hereunder is hereby denied. The following are the votes of the planning board. Millius, yes. Gainer, yes. Troop, yes. Sylvester, yes. Jamie Walsh, yes.
I'm sorry, I missed it. Was the weak location of the fire hydrant on the property, was that one of the?
Yes, fire hydrant force condition, fire hydrant installed as shown on revised plans 8/20/25.
I missed it. Thank you.
You're welcome. So.
So what we should do.
The site plan should refer to the final date of the plan, and we need to make it one building.
Yes.
And cross off the dimensions and put the correct dimensions?
Yes. Make, we can make those changes and authorize either the chair or the vice chair to sign.
Was there, oh, and the only other one that I like is to follow with our all Halifax bylaws and codes. That used to be in decision letters, and I think that it's, it, it just makes it clear and concise. Can we add that, please?
I don't have a problem with that. Does anyone else?
So with these, should we vote to make these changes? So I vote, I, I'll, I'll make a motion that the decision letter have the date of the final plan, which is, oh, sorry, it does. I got confused because of the March 12 original, but it does. So it's correct that change. I make a motion to change it to one building and put the correct dimensions of the building, and at the end say that it needs to follow all other Halifax bylaws and codes.
Needs to conform.
Thank you. And in that language, we use it. Take it a second.
Second. I can second. Moved and seconded. What she said. I hate doing that.
Sure.
What was the last thing that you said, um, about the Halifax bylaws?
So the site plan to follow all other Halifax bylaws and codes.
To be in compliance with, yeah.
Am I missing it? I.
I remember this.
Oh, 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 no, 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 yeah, I see what you mean, and I was wondering if that was it too. No, it just says that we used to be planning board 16728. It didn't, it doesn't talk about all the other bylaws. So it, you could probably find it on a.
That decision letter, you have, from the algists has something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
I haven't changed anything in the decisions, so I'm asking you to look.
This, yeah, I promise you, this isn't against you. I'm just making everything clear. Where is it? Thank you, Brett.
Thanks. That's me. I was taking it home.
Please be advised that special permits and site plans must comply with all the rules, regulations, and codes of the town of Halifax.
Yeah, yeah. That's fair. Deal. Where did we leave off with that? We have a motion and a second? Did we have a vote?
No, we didn't.
We have a motion and a second to.
Approve with the changes.
Approve the site plan approval letter with the changes noted.
And for this, I might as well, can I amend this?
Yeah, yeah.
And I might as well, for this decision letter where we just voted and went over it, set the chair or vice chair, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that makes it better. The second agrees. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Unanimous. Thank you all. And I believe, unless there's anything else I'm missing, the next scheduled meeting is October 16th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Or, no, actually, let me take a second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? He's in a three-point stance.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Rose.
Go Red Sox.
Red Sox, huh?